It is February 27th. It is our final board meeting of the month. It is 7:30, and if the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Ayello.
Here.
Trustee Bulfus.
Here.
Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Here.
President Collerton.
Here. And if we could all please stand for the pledge. Nick from Troop 230, who is soon to be an Eagle Scout, will be leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing. Trustee Taglia, could you lead us in a prayer, please?
Certainly. Our Heavenly Father will be pleased to grant that this meeting thus begun in order, be conducted in peace, and closed in harmony. Amen.
See, Nick wasn't too bad, right? All right. And with that, we will go to item three on our agenda, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bulfus.
Second.
Questions or comments for the board on the approval of the agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Yes. Item four, village presidents' report, the Nezra family introduction. Now, a little thing to read, and then I'm going to introduce Greg, and Greg will take over from there. Nezra is grateful to have received a very significant gift from the Andy Stelzner Fund to support the startup expenses and initial costs for the new TREC program launched in January for our adults, adult participants. Andy Stelzner was a participant who passed away in 2001. In 2005, the family started donating money. This year, they decided to donate to a specific program. TREC is a recreation-based program to develop, to meet the unique needs of transition-aged individuals with a mental disability who desire to reach their full potential through recreational and leisure activities and community involvement. The program provides opportunities which challenge the individual but also ensure success and a positive experience. TREC strives to maintain and develop social skills and life skills in order to provide individuals with positive experiences within their community and assist with the transitions occurring in their post-school years of life. This thoughtful and generous donation demonstrates a positive and meaningful way of honoring the memory of Andrea Stelzner through the lives of adults involved in this unique program. The TREC participants will be enriched by this wonderful contribution. I'm going to introduce our Director of Parks and Rec, Greg Gola. And Greg, if you can make sure to introduce everybody who's with us today from Nezra.
We will. Thank you, President Collerton. Actually, I'd like to bring Karen Lesniak up. She's the fund, Director of Fund Development for Nezra. And also Nikki Kraft and her sister, Jo. Lisa, you can come on up as well. Karen will, she knows more about the involvement of the ladies with Nezra, so she's better prepared to explain their involvement in Nezra. But at this point in time, we'd like to recognize their involvement and make sure that the community recognizes their involvement in Nezra, and we think it's very important, and we certainly appreciate the involvement that you guys bring to Nezra. Thank you.
And just for everybody out there, Nezra is for Northeastern DuPage Special Recreation Association, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen Lesniak.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, everyone. It's really a pleasure to be here this evening, and like Greg said, it's just so important for Nezra to be able to acknowledge in this home community the wonderful things that this family has done to support Nezra and our participants. Over the last seven years, this family, through the Andy Stelzner Fund, has contributed over $10,000 to our programs. Some of Andy's favorite programs were our summer day camps. And so, for several years, we've received contributions for our Fee Assistance Scholarship Program for children to participate in summer camps, and that's been wonderful. And then, most recently, as was mentioned, the TREC program. TREC stands for Transitional Age Recreation Experiences in Community. So, as the blurb explains, this is a post-education program for young adults to still continue to, you know, expand their independence, explore opportunities to be involved in the community, self-advocacy, and also, you know, I think some peer relationships, and develop more self-esteem and confidence, and having a year-long program, Wednesdays and Fridays. This is a brand-new program. We started in January, so when we talked with the family, and they wanted to, you know, make a contribution to something that could be benefiting participants, we brainstormed and thought this might be a really nice fit. So, we're very proud of the program. It meets Wednesdays and Fridays, and participants have been out doing a lot of community service and cooking and activities in the community. But more importantly, I just really wanted to spend a moment to say how grateful Nezra is for the contributions that the family has given to Nezra, to know that they truly appreciated and trusted Andy in our care for so many years in the summer camps and other programs, and then also to realize the value and the benefits of community recreation and getting involved, and the benefits of recreation for people with disabilities mean so much that they are able to continue to contribute to those still involved in honor and in memory of Andy. And that's such a special gift of Andy. She's really living through the lives of so many of these participants, and we're just honored. We've had a really nice relationship with the family and appreciate everything they've done. And I just want to make a plug. There's been a website that they've developed, and it's called Andyswindow.org, without apostrophe, right?
Right.
Andyswindow, A-N-D-I-S window.org. And if you could check that out, I think you'd be really pleasantly surprised and really honored to see the great things that the family has done in our community. You should be very proud of the residents that you have here. So, I thank you for the time that you've given us this evening.
Thank you.
Anything? No?
Well, I just wanted to mention that the Andy Stelzner Fund is, was set up through the DuPage Community Foundation, and it's set up as a donor-advised fund, and after our daughter passed away, that's when we established it. And the main point would be to provide seed money. Besides Nezra, we do donate to Ray Graham. And if you go on the website, we have a complete list from when we started in 2003 with the grants that we've given out to various places and agencies. And we, we just think it's very important, not only for people with disabilities to be included in the community, but also for people with disabilities to be in programs that provide not only leisure but chances to go out and do volunteer work. And every money, every program that we've given seed money to, including TREC, a part of the programming when we meet, when the program is being set up, is that there will be some type of volunteer work done in the community by the people with disabilities. So, it's, you know, it's a two-way street, and we want people to see what people with disabilities can give back.
Good. And thank you, you know, for coming with us this evening. There's been many contributions to Nezra on your sister's behalf, too. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think, I think most of us up on the board and everybody I talk to in the community, we have a, we have a very strong, at least I feel, from people I talk to, involvement with Nezra here in Villa Park from, from everything I get. And I get, I think we've nominated a couple athletes over the past three years who've gotten Athlete of the Year. Maybe four years, I think we've had two of them come out of Villa Park.
Uh-huh.
And that was very cool. They, and I've, I see our baseball team out there waiting for the bus on Wednesday nights, I believe.
You have a pick-up point here, right?
Yeah, right at the police station, there waiting. And I, I truly think the Nezra program's absolutely fantastic. So, I'm very glad Villa Park's involved with it, and I'm very glad we offer it through, is the opportunity for our community. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. It's great to be a part with the village of Villa Park. Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Number five is public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on an agenda item? That would be items number six through 11. If you want to speak on the Committee of the Whole portion of the meeting, at every point on the Committee of the Whole, there is an opportunity to speak. So, if you're looking to speak on that, please wait until the Committee of the Whole. If you'd like to speak on any of the other items, now would be your time. Nick, anything to add? No, you're good? Okay. All right. With that, we will move on to number six, consent agenda. There is nothing on the consent agenda. Number seven, village clerks' report, minutes for village board meeting for February 13th, 2012, minutes from village board special meeting workshop, February 20th, 2012. Can I have a motion on the village clerks' report?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Make a motion.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Second motion.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Yes. Item eight, approved bill listing. Approved bill listing dated February 27th, 2012, with the amount of $644,381.62. Can I have a motion to approve the bill listing?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bulfus.
Make a motion to approve the bill listing.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second.
Questions or comments for the board on the bill listing?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
A question for the manager. In regards to, well, it appears on page two, and then there's another reference to it, in terms of Tressler in the legal feed.
Yes.
I'm wondering, are we getting close to the end? We've seen Tressler bills on our bill listing.
Yes, we are. What I did is that some of the cases that we had going on were easier to have Tressler do rather than have Kathy, our village attorney Kathy, or do the catch-up and then take over the case. It was just less expensive. And yes, we, I think we're, over the last 10 days, we resolved two cases and still have about two more with Tressler, and then hopefully they'll be resolved.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Mr. President. Trustee Ayello, two questions. In the package, page 16, and another question, page 17, does it copy a rental? It said line 10.515.00.270. It's $885. It didn't tell me what the time period was for the period of the copy of rental. I'm just curious about.
You're on page 16?
Yeah, the entire packet. Yes.
Page 7.
Comes a little different computerized.
It's the, under 10.515.00.270?
Yeah.
The GFC leasing, that's copy of rentals from March 5th through April 4th, and then underneath that is the quarterly printer maintenance of three different items. So, GFC is actually Gordon Flesch Company.
So, the 885 was for the period of March 5th, April 4th?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the next page, 10.516.00.299, February Cleaning Services?
Yes, that's correct. That's our cleaning services for the buildings and grounds. That's Village Hall, Police Department. There's a separate bill for the metro station. So, yes, that's accurate.
I have a question on that. I don't have a problem with the bill at all. My question is, do we ever look into, there's a, between the two of them, it's a little over two grand. What would cost, is it cost-effective to lead it as a third-party vendor versus bringing it in-house? Yeah? Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the bill listing? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Number nine, second reading of an ordinance approving Villa Park Fire Department Foreign Insurance Board's budget for the fiscal year 2012, 2013. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second motion.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Yes. Item 10, resolution approving a donation agreement with Jenny and Michael Colagrosi for lots 184 and 185 in the Volk Brothers Ardmore Avenue Edition subdivision. Can I have a motion approving the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Move to approve a resolution.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Second motion.
Questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Manager Keener, can you explain, just for the residents' information, exactly where this is located? I know we've got a map in our packet, but if you can briefly explain exactly where this is and what you might use for the land.
Yes.
And let every know that it's a donation to us.
Right.
Not a donation from us to them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're actually giving.
Just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
What has transpired with the, with the Jenny and Michael Colagrosi event is that the land donation from Michael and Jenny Colagrosi to the village of several parcels that they were not using, and they thought the village could use these several parcels for stormwater drainage or maybe a neighborhood park and some future endeavor of ours. So, we were happy to take the donation of these two parcels and form for the payment of back taxes, last year's back taxes, which is fine. Doesn't amount to a lot of money. I do have a map, if the camera wants to zoom in on it, but the parcels are near Harvard Avenue.
They could come with a little overhead.
And very nice area, and if we would do some, some storm drainage improvements in that area, these land parcels would be very, very beneficial. Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Item 11, resolution approving a contract for roof replacement project for 20 and 28 West Home Avenue. Can I have a motion for the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Move to approve the resolution.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second motion.
Questions or comments for the board? See none, roll call vote.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bulfus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Collerton.
Yes. Item 12, unfinished business, none. Item 13, new business, none. Item 14, village managers' report.
Thank you.
Oh, there is something, okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to update the board and our Villa Park citizens that today we were awarded an Emerald Ash Bore Grant for $8,000, which will allow us to plant some trees as we eliminate the ones that are infested. I thought that was a great opportunity for us to apply for this grant, so we're, so far, we're the only one in our area that's been awarded $8,000, Your Honor. Another item I'd like to update the board on would be our CERT program through the Police Department was awarded a $6,000 grant through Union Pacific. Again, that's specialized grant that we applied for a few months ago, and it's for training, and are very happy to put that money to use. Just wanted to also update the board and the Villa Park citizens that recently we instituted the recycling drop-off area here where we have a large container two blocks down on Home. Today, I was notified that it's been very successful since January 1st. We put the unit there on January 1st. They emptied it for the first time. Our funds totaled $346.17, but what that really equates to is we paid the rent on the container for two months, and then we're going to get a minimal check back, Your Honor. So, it was quite successful. Another item I'd like to update the board on and our residents, this Wednesday night at the Iowa Community Center, we'll be holding the Villa Park Electric Aggregation Public Meeting where staff will explain the aggregation of electricity in the effort to save money for the Villa Park citizens. So, that's at 6:15 this Wednesday at the Iowa Center, Your Honor.
That's huge.
Yes, it is. And we will have one more meeting that I believe we're going to put on a Saturday morning, the electric aggregation. Kind of have a meeting maybe at our golf course and maybe coffee with the public officials at the same time. Another item I'd like to mention is that at the next meeting on the 12th, we're going to fully utilize the consent agenda, Your Honor, and probably move some things up to the consent agenda, including the minutes, just to utilize efficiency with the agenda. And actually, the village clerks' report is a moment for Hozana to give us all an update, just kind of bring us up to speed on what's happening in, in her area. So, we're going to just move some things up at the consent agenda, and of course, with that, we'd have the opportunity to pull it out and vote on it separately if we needed to, but just to utilize that. Just to remind everybody that we have the OMA training, which is the training for appointed and public officials for the Open Meetings Act. Very important. It's mandatory now that all of our commissioners, all of our appointed folks and our public officials take the OMA training. And if you were, if you came on board after January 1, you have 90 days to complete it. If you were on your, in your position before January 1, you have the whole 12-month period to complete it. And what I thought, Your Honor, that I would have my executive secretary send letters to all the commissions for the month of March, have them go to the library during their regular meeting in March and use the library annex, and we do the training of all the commissioners at that time, and just kind of move through the commissions like that. Because at the end of the training, when you do it online, you have to actually print out your certificate, which goes in file, so we can prove you've been, you've went through the training. And then, the village trustees, so like they can do the training on their own, online, you go on to Illinois Attorney General's leases page, and you go on to ensuring open government, and you log in as an OMA public body member, a PB member, create your own ID and password, and that'll take you through everything. It's about two to three hours, but you, you learn the material, then you're tested, and you can't go further if you don't test correctly. So, it all depends on how you answer the questions. And I just want to share one more thing. Had a webinar, had staff and I participated in an awesome webinar, and one of the items that was mentioned was Public Act 97632, which is an amendment to the Illinois Comptroller's Office where municipalities, school districts can actually partner with the state of Illinois, and as long as the software connects from the state to the city or the state to the district, we can actually go after folks that didn't pay their parking fines, who didn't pay their water bills, sewer bills, or their adjudication fines, and this Illinois Comptroller's Office will take the money out of their income tax before it's given to them. So, it's really unique.
Refund?
Refund, yes. If you have a refund. So, we're going to pursue that very rigorously, and it's pretty exciting. So, with that, Your Honor, I'd like that.
All right. We will go to village attorneys' report.
I have no report.
All right. We'll go to village trustees. Trustee Bulfus.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Trustee Taglia.
Just a couple things tonight, Mr. President. I was reading the Illinois Policy Institute website, and I noticed that one of our colleagues, a trustee from Lombard, Mr. Tom Breen, was able to bring forward an ordinance for Lombard. And what it is, it's a municipal transparency policy, and I would propose to this board that we implement something similar. What this policy does is it, it requires the village to post on their website salaries, contracts, financial audits, budgets, taxes, fees, and such information on the website so that it's easy for the people to get to and to see how the village is operating, where the money is being spent. So, that's something I'd like to propose and bring forward.
Before you go to your next point, Manager Keener said, can he respond?
Oh, yes. Well, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, that's actually mandated now, and before we actually institute this year's fiscal budget, part of that is, I believe, and maybe village attorney or can correct me if I'm wrong, that if you happen to make, I think it's $75,000 or less, you have six days to report that after the effective budget approval. If you make more than, is it 75,000? If you make more than 75,000, you have to report that on a website, six days prior to the adoption of the budget. So, you've got the six days before and the six days after. So, I reviewed today with Finance Director Lump, the actual graph that we're going to put on the website, and I believe what we'll do is it'll have my name, my title, my compensation, my sick days, my vacation days, and one other one. Oh, any bonuses or carry-ons. That'll be me. So, and then the other employees will be as such. And we're also going to do it for firefighters and police and all I am around. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Wow, you shattered the cat down. That was so bad.
That's good news.
We react fast.
That was good. Also, it's come to my attention, just concerns with residents, that there's been a severe lack of communication with the board. So, I'd like to propose that we come up with some kind of schedule that might work for the entire board to resume coffee with the board, so that we can have informal discussions, roundtables with citizens, so we can hear their concerns and we can address them directly. I think it's important that we do this, and if the board could come together and come up with a time, maybe it's Saturday afternoon. I don't know what works, but.
Can I ask you a favor?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to spearhead that?
I would be more than happy to.
Sounds fantastic. If you can get everybody's board schedules and we can find a time, that would be great.
Right. And even if we could alternate, but I think that it's important. I think it needs to be done, and it's, it's what should be done, so.
Sounds great.
That's the extent of my report, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Taglia. Trustee Case?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Trustee Davis?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Want to go fast? Get to it back to Daytona.
Yeah.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple things tonight. In regards to the CPA and CERT programs, which are programs through the Police Department, I've received some inquiries from some folks that are involved with these programs, and it's the Community Emergency Response Team, which is a CERT program, and the Citizens Police Academy, CPA. Received some inquiries from folks that are involved with the programs that are under the understanding that these programs are canceled, they're no longer part of the village structure, if you will, opportunities, if you will, through the Police Department. And it's my understanding that they're not going anywhere. And in fact, there was a blurb in the Winter Spring 2012 Village Matters Newsletter talking about both of these programs, where people can still send in their applications to be involved with both of these programs for both the spring and the fall sessions. And our Environmental Concerns Commission is also planning a metric cleanup, and we would like to see the CPA and the CERT folks involved with that as well. And Manager Keener, I'd like to ask you, kind of in parlay with the grant that you just talked about, talk a little bit more about what the village is up to and how we can encourage more people to get involved.
Thank you. Certainly will do that. As I mentioned earlier, CERT just received a $6,000 grant. The CERT and the CPA are two fine organizations, both alive and well. In fact, we're just looking and trying to select a date to clean up the metro, metro area like we did last year, and looking for a CPA training and new member drive too. In fact, Chief Pavelcheck and I were just talking about that later last week and again today. And Chief Pavelcheck, maybe you would like to address both of these organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Keener, and thank you to the board. Yes, I want to say the email went out either last Friday or this past Monday to CERT participants, past participants, and to CPA alumni to get them restarted in training. Training in the world of the police and into our, with our community groups is always an ongoing adventure, that you need to schedule to keep current, keep fresh. And I know that Officer Bill Lyons is the point man. So he's starting with our current group of alumni and past participants to get them restarted in their training and their involvement. And then after we determine the size of that group and the activities of that group, then we'll look to move forward with a new group of people who have not had the training, and we'll look to start up in the future with a new one. So we have both, you know, programs have an assigned officer within the Police Department who's ready, willing, and able to go forward, and certainly thanks to the Union Pacific Railroad for that grant to help us with that training.
So if people want to apply, I've had some people already ask me if they can still apply for these programs to be involved.
Yeah, they would want to contact Officer Bill Lyons at the Police Department. Again, we don't have a date for brand-new trainings, but he has certainly reached out. In fact, if there are any CPA alumni or CERT members that were not contacted by email in the last week, they need to reach out to Officer Lyons in case they change their emails or something, because they should have gotten notice on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second thing on my list is, FYI to the board, Wednesday, April 25th, is the Illinois Municipal League's Lobby Day in Springfield. And this is really a great opportunity for our board to come together and pull together some priorities that we can take down to Springfield. So I've spoken briefly to Manager Keener about that and just would like to bring that to the board. And if anybody, you know, has any ideas, anything you want to, you know, address in Springfield, this would be a good time for us to go down. It's Wednesday, April 25th. Really allows us to have our voices heard. And I'm going to be going down. I've already blocked it on my calendar, and I'm hoping others from the board can join me. It's a day, you know, it's a day trip, but it's time well spent, so I wanted to throw that out there too. So that's basically all I have.
Thank you. All right, Trustee Aiello.
Nothing to know. I know we have a clerk's report.
Yes, but I have no report. Nothing tonight, thank you.
Usually you talk so much.
All right, real quick, two things tonight. Today, early voting started for the March 20th primary. The only, some of you may have remembered, you could have voted at Yorktown Mall. That is not an option this time. The only place to early vote is at Elmhurst City Hall, at least for Villa Park. So if you want to early vote, please go to Elmhurst Village Hall. The voting hours are open as the same as their Village Hall hours. I don't know if that's 8:30 or 9:00 that they open, but it's pretty much standard. If you go there in the middle of the day, they should be open. If not, Elmhurst is, well, doing probably a great job whatsoever. But no, they should be open regular City Hall hours. But so, early voting is over in Elmhurst. Also, earlier tonight, there was a speaker on with Sid Berg, I believe, who talked about the Dikey Home. We have a Dikey Home here in Villa Park, and it is for developmentally disabled adults. It helps them transition into life living on their own. They're having a dance. It is Dancing with the Dikey Stars. They're having live music. It's a fundraiser, March 3rd, 2012, 6:30 to 8:00, and then 8:00 to midnight is music. So please come out and support it. This is, let me see if there's a website. There's not a website to go to, but if you have questions about it, it's at the Villa Park VFW. The phone number is (630) 834-8191. Or if you want to contact to donate directly, you can call Ron, know how to say the last name correctly, Don G U I Goodland?
No, I don't.
Ah, man. Goodland at (630) 629-5212, or (630) 802-8058. It should be a great evening, but come on out, support a good cause, and support some adults and some young adults who are trying to live independently through the Dikey Home. And with that, we will go to Committee of the Whole. Let's say, oh, no, my fault, we have one more. Two more, sorry. Public comments on non-agenda items. If there is a comment on a non-agenda item, please come to the microphone, state your name. You can sign in right at the front. We need that for the Clerk's Report. So are there any public comments on non-agenda items? And if you want to speak on Committee of the Whole, we'll get there. All right, with that, 18, consider executive session, RE 5 ILCS C1 Personnel Matters and Collective Bargaining, 5 ILCS 120/2 C5 Litigation, and 5 ILCS 120/2 C11 Purchase or Lease of Real Property for the Public Body. Could I have a motion to consider executive session?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Make a motion to consider executive session.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Bulvis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. And with that, we will now recess to the Committee of the Whole. Item one on the agenda for Committee of the Whole is approved minutes from Village COW meeting for February 13, 2012. Could I have a motion to approve minutes?
Mr. President?
Trustee Taglia?
Move to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote?
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Bulvis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item two, consider approval of ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses and decrease the number of Class H licenses. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. Approval of this ordinance would increase the number of Class D liquor licenses from seven to nine and decrease the number of Class H liquor licenses from eight to six. The total number of liquor licenses allowed in the village of Villa Park would stay and remain at 50. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on item two? Any members of the board? Consensus to move this to the formal?
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Bulvis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
No.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item three, consider an ordinance of the village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, adding hearing costs as penalties for administrative hearings. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. The village of Villa Park is organized as a non-home rule municipality created in accordance with the Constitution of the State of Illinois of 1970, and Chapter 26 of the Villa Park Municipal Code provides for administrative adjudication for violations of the municipal code. It is recommended that the village include hearing costs as part of the penalty for ordinance violations. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Bowwinkle?
A quick question for the manager. Within the material that you provided, I think I saw where it was, it's a $35 fee?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. And what will that be used for? How will that be?
That will be to offset some of the attorney fees or offset staff's time in preparing the adjudication material.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Trustee Bulvis?
Now, what's all, what all do we adjudicate that this $35 would be applied to?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes.
This is primarily involved where you don't have a fine because someone has shown compliance. And the fact of the matter is, is that if we issue primarily building code violations and compliance is achieved so that when you come in, rather than, or you appear before the hearing officer, there will be no fines. Fines start at $50 and up. On the other hand, it has cost this village to enforce the building code, and it's a significant cost overall, so that even if you are found not liable because you have conformed, there is a cost, and that's when this would take place. This would probably be added only where, and we would ask our hearing officers only to add us where there's been no fine.
So these are basically then just for code violations? They don't apply to the red light camera violations?
It could, no, it would not apply to red light.
Okay.
It would not apply to red lights.
Okay.
That's a statutory maximum, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Consensus?
Trustee Bulvis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item four, consider request for permanent removal of all neon green stop for pedestrians at crosswalk sides located throughout Villa Park. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. Traffic and Safety Commission has formally requested that these neon green signs be permanently removed and not replaced. This request is a result of a public hearing that was held on Tuesday, December 13, 2011, that was regarding the placement of these signs, and was the unanimous decision of the committee that the signs are not needed because they are a distraction in the village. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And we actually have Ed McMurray, who is the Chair of the Traffic and Safety Commission. So before I go to basic public comment, Ed, you want to make some...
Should be more than happy to. This came up, obviously, last summer, around when the neon green signs came up around the Prairie Path and the Great Western Trail. We actually had a couple of residents voice their concerns that because of the way the signs are designed and you have that stop sign, the drivers view that as a stop sign, even though what the law, the law on the books states, if I remember correctly, that they only have to stop for when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk.
We have a demonstration tool.
Be the Santa.
Your Santa.
Trustee Vanoway.
Ah! He's better looking.
Wow.
You're out.
The old signs before the law was changed by the, by Springfield, instead of the stop, it was yield to pedestrians. Now, with the law changed, new compliance is they have the stop sign. However, as most drivers understand, if they see the eight octagonal red stop sign, their first instinct is to stop. No matter if they have to or not, you see that, you're going to stop. What that's been causing is they're stopping when they don't need to, at number one. Number two, because they're stopping when they don't need to, you've got residents, drivers who are slamming on their brakes. It's from the Police Department, while there has been no official increase, from what we've been told, they have had concerns from what Lieutenant Esposito spoke to us about a couple months ago of increased near misses, is what he's been calling them. And number three, quite frankly, it places a false sense of security on the person crossing, the bicyclist or the runner, because if you all remember correctly, on the Prairie Path, there is a stop sign, and pedestrians must yield to vehicular traffic at all times. And the only time that vehicular traffic must yield to a pedestrian is once they are in the crosswalk. So we have concluded and determined that because of the, excuse me, because of the fact that we can't correct all the confusion, because we can't get everybody's head, it would be just the best and most simplest way to eliminate these signs and allow for people to use common sense would be the best way to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. President, according to our research, we cannot find an ordinance that mandated those signs. And so be aware of the fact that if you vote to proceed to have the signs removed, your action tonight will be the final action, because it was originally a policy, and so this vote tonight, it will not appear on a subsequent agenda.
Right. So they'll just be, if the vote goes forward with this, they'll just be removed?
The auth, right. Authorization is given, because it was a policy initially.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Trustee Taglia?
I want to thank Ed for his work and his commission's work. It's very important. And just to kind of verify what their concerns are, I think we've all driven by the Prairie Path, and people very boldly will step right out in front of your vehicle. A man, I was 10 feet away from him, he stepped right out in front of my car, scared me to death. Just because that stop sign is there doesn't mean my car stops instantly. And I almost hit this man, and scared the life out of me. And I know that sign causes the confusion, so I agree that to remove the confusion is the best idea. So thank you, Mr. McMurray, for your work. Mr. President?
Trustee Bulvis?
But I'm still confused, because we had the former police chief here telling us that the pedestrians had the right of way, once they're in the crosswalk, right? So...
They still do.
They still do.
They still have the right of way.
You can't hit them, right?
You still...
It's against the law to hit them.
Just because you're, just if we decide to remove these signs, it is, you still are not allowed to run over pedestrians.
Yeah, what about, what about bicyc, what about bicyc...
That's never been the actual law. You are not allowed to run over people.
But the bicyclists have to stop.
Bicyclists actually, and we have stop signs posted, but as most of us have probably seen on the Prairie Path, a lot of times bicyclist, bicyclists don't stop. They come flying right through. And I don't think it really has anything to do with they see that sign and think it's okay, because a lot of them aren't paying attention. We've had events on the Prairie Path. Every year, you see the Chamber of Commerce steak fry and sizzle, and the function is on the Prairie Path, and people on their bikes are still going right through the middle of the crowd. And it happens at the Kiwanis, Kiwanis Nights as well. In the middle of the summer, there's signs up, we post, the Kiwanis Club posts up that says, please walk your bike, and you still people, see people cruising right through it. I don't know if you're ever going to get rid of people who don't pay attention.
Well, I just want, just because those signs aren't out there, I want the residents to know, when that pedestrian's foot touches that off the curb, you have to stop.
It is still the law. The law states that what's the pedestrian is in the crosswalk, the car has to stop. That is, that is the law that's going forward. It's just they won't have the sign to worry about or to see now. And I think truthfully, the only one that wasn't taken was probably the one by the police station. I think most of them have disappeared, and were gone probably by week two. We replaced a couple, but amazingly, they kept disappearing. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Trustee Bowwinkle?
For what it's worth, I, to appreciate what you've done and the fact that you've addressed this. I've been caught in traffic jams in front of several of these locations, we're five, six cars deep, because people think they have to stop. So I'm glad that we're addressing this. And probably before we instituted this, we probably should have done some sort of public education campaign or some sort of education in advance, well in advance, before we instituted this. So this was a lesson learned, for sure, at least for me.
Of course. Because, you know, once one person stops, one car stops, everybody else has to stop.
Yeah.
Especially over here by, at the Prairie Path at Ardmore, because of how it's designed, you have Park and you have Central, and if they're backed up because someone's stopping, and then that car behind them is going to be like, well, they stopped, maybe I should stop. So now all of a sudden, you've just got a major traffic flow issue.
I've literally been in five, six-deep, you know, traffic jams at a couple of these different intersections, so...
And President Colleton, to answer your comment about education for the bicyclists, that actually came up at a previous meeting about if the Police Department still had their bicycles, to put the officers on the bicycles, that's going forward. That's something we're going to speak with our police liaison about, to see if we can get the officers back on the bicycles in the summer.
And actually, yeah, if I could just add to that, that we've discussed this in the Environmental Concerns Commission meeting and also through the community bike ride. The first year of our bike ride, they were on the bikes, and then last year, we had the
the Explorers on the bikes. So we are starting to use them, but I agree, we should use them much more often. That's good to hear. Yes, I'm glad you're addressing that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you very much. But remember, I think Ed actually touched the best point out there. Common sense.
Very important.
Guess what? If you see somebody about to walk into the crosswalk who's got, you know, a dog and three kids with them, it's not going to hurt anybody if you slow down and stop and let them through. You know, but again, common sense. If you see a bicyclist who doesn't look like he's going to stop, don't go, oh, I have the right of way. I hope he realizes that before he comes into the intersection, because guess what? You may win, but somebody's going to get really hurt. So again, with most of these intersections and with most of these areas, common sense should rule the day. And if you're walking, don't think that the car is just going to stop for you automatically. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Appreciate it, appreciate it. With that consensus, Ed?
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item 5, consider an ordinance of the village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, banning the no parking zones on Villa Avenue. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Traffic and Safety Commission has formally requested that the parking restrictions be changed based on the results of a public hearing held on January 10, 2012. The Traffic and Safety Commission heard evidence from the village engineer, deputy police chief, and selected commission members to recommend that the current parking restrictions be altered to reflect the movement of water mains and fire hydrants to the east side of the street. Thank you, Your Honor.
And we have Mr. McMurray back. Go ahead.
When Villa, South Villa Avenue was reconstructed from Madison to St. Charles, during that process, the water mains were relocated from the west side of Villa between Madison and the Prairie Path to the east side. Currently, as the ordinance is in the books, there is no parking allowed on the west side of the street, whereas standard village ordinances state that there is no parking on the water main side of the street. So to make this concurrent with all the other village ordinances, and to reflect where the fire hydrants are and the water mains, we have recommended that the ordinance be updated so that there be no parking allowed on the east side of Villa Avenue between Madison and the Prairie Path, and to allow parking on the west side between those same areas.
Any other questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
Commission's been busy.
Seems like it. Trustee Case?
We've already started with common sense, see?
See, there we go. Again, Mr. McMurray, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Are we going to give people a little bit of notice, maybe a little bit of grace period, if they park on the incorrect side, if they've been used to parking on the incorrect side for many years? Well, correct side until it gets adopted.
Yes, Your Honor, there'd be a public education outreach.
Okay. Make sure to drop a leaflet at everybody's home that says, "Parking restrictions only change," etc. Any other questions or comments? Consensus?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Mr. McMurray, thank you again.
Thank you.
Great job with your commission, and thank you for coming out, giving all the facts and supporting it.
No problem. We try.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Oh, one thing real quick, I'm sorry to break order. Manager Keener, we're having a meeting on Tuesday, March 13. If you could, if you could come out, we have a couple things we'd like to bring up with you.
Happy.
It's nothing bad, it's just...
He might be out of town.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Give him too much notice, Ed. All right, item 6, consider a resolution authorizing agreements for enforcement of traffic and parking regulations on private property pursuant to the Illinois Vehicle Code. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. A general agreement for shopping centers so that the Villa Park Police Department can enforce traffic regulations on private property. This can only be done if there is an agreement between the owner and the village of Villa Park. In the past, we have had letters from property owners which do not give us the indemnification that a formal agreement would provide. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item 7, advanced bill listing, A through G. Can I have a consensus to move those to the formal?
Can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Trustee Balthus.
Item A, cantling fee or account. There's some bills on here for the redevelopment agreement with MCC. Are those then going to be applied to the Tiff District, assigned to have for payment out of those accounts?
Yes.
It should be, and it should have been billed separately. I will double, that won't happen again, but yes, thank you.
Okay. And then, and all the other stuff, is some of this stuff applied to department accounts that are, that would fall underneath their accounts, possibly? You don't have to go through them, no?
You don't have to run through them, just will they be applied to those different...
Yeah. Do we split this up into...
Essentially, I think what he's asking is, do all these fall under each department they'll go under, as opposed, that come out of each budget, or it just comes straight out of one fund?
E will be the North Avenue Tiff, and some of A will be the Tiffs, and some of it may be in the police department's...
Legal fees?
Legal fees on that activity code.
Okay.
We could prepare a bill if you tell us how you want us to divide it, to save you time, and then it would be, you'd be...
Well, not if it's going to cost us extra for you to do it.
Anything to increase the total bill. No, it'd be a computer setup.
I'll let you work that out with the man.
Yes, I'll be happy to. I didn't know that was the...
All right. Consensus to advance bill listing?
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, and with that, we will adjourn to executive session. We will not be coming out of executive session with any votes, and next village board meeting is not until March 12. So have a great week, Villa Park.